For the record, my name is Chuck Henry. I am the health officer for the Florida Department of Health in Sarasota and the director for Sarasota County Health and Human Services. This morning, I'm going to talk briefly about COVID-19 in our community and what's going on, viral levels and activity, which I think is really important. Then I'll talk a little bit about vaccine distribution and we'll end on vaccine appointment and reservation system. So that's the path I'm going to follow. Certainly you can stop me for questions anywhere along the way. This morning, and these are yesterday's numbers because every day the department validates the new numbers and those will be out probably late morning or early afternoon. So as of yesterday morning, there were 21,626 total cumulative cases of COVID-19 in Sarasota County. Of important note, 1,720 of those occurred in the last seven days. That's a little bit alarming to me and I'll talk more about that in a minute. Our daily case average, if we look at where we're at in terms of number of new cases that are coming to me every day, is about 224 today. And for comparison, if I go back to September, we were at 34 new cases a day. So tremendous difference between then and now. If we look at our percent positivity that you've heard me talk about quite a bit, we're holding our own there. Our 14-day positivity, which is the number I like to use because I like to look at it over a 14-day period instead of day by day, is 7.7% today. And so that's higher than I want to be. That compares with a low of about 4% in September. We even flirted a little bit with the high threes. That compares with the state today at between 10 and 11%. So that's kind of where we're at. When I look at our seven-day positivity rate, which I, a shorter period, so not as confident on where those numbers are at, but I look at that just to help me gauge where we're going, it's at 8.09. So that, to me, indicates we're still climbing a little bit and so we need to be careful. Why is that really important? Well, it's important because we don't want to see people infected in our community and we know that there's a lot of virus circulating around our community right now, probably more than we've seen throughout this pandemic. And I think that's probably a result of the two back-to-back holiday seasons and the travel associated with those holiday seasons and maybe a little bit of complacency as a community. You know, we continue to encourage everyone to do the right things, but we've been in this for 11-plus months and people are getting tired of all of those things, no doubt. So, you know, one of my messages today is to remind our community that we really need to continue paying attention to those basic things. Social distancing, when you can't social distance, wear a mask, stay home when you're sick, wash your hands often and frequently, increase your sanitation around your offices and homes, all of those things, and stay at home when we're sick or if you're a known contact of someone that's sick. Be very suspicious of symptoms. If you have what you think is allergies or a mild cold, suspect it might be COVID and go get tested. There's plenty of testing resources across our community now so that you can be sure that you're not risking others in your family or your colleagues. So that's a continuing message. You've heard me say it many times. I'll continue to push it. It is critically important for our community. It really becomes important when we look at hospitalizations and that's a common theme I've talked about here before. One of our underlying goals through this pandemic is to try to prevent our hospitals from becoming overwhelmed. That's not because I feel sorry for my colleagues and I don't want them overworked, although I have great relationships with our hospitals. It's because they can't do their job to provide the very best healthcare for those that are ill if they don't have the staff and the space to do it. And so fortunately, our hospitals are kind of holding steady right now. We are in peak season, so our population is higher and therefore our overall census in the hospital is higher before we add COVID into the mix. Many of you probably are seeing in the news what's happening in places like Los Angeles where the hospitals are overwhelmed and they're putting patients in the hallways and opening up chapels and anywhere else. And that's not optimal care for those patients. And so it's really important to us as a community that we watch those numbers closely and we do what we can to prevent that from happening here because ultimately, we want to make sure that our healthcare providers have the staff and the space to provide that top-level healthcare that we're used to.
Mr. Ziegler.
Do you have a chart for the hospitalizations by any chance?
I do not have a chart for the hospitalizations. I didn't realize that was up there already, but I'll talk about this. You know, this is the segment. This chart shows the daily averages month by month. So it's a monthly average of our daily new caseload and you can see where we were in the 30s in September and now we're up at 244. And so this is just, I'm not trying to be dramatic, but this is what the data says is happening in our community in terms of the number of new cases we're seeing every day and how it's climbing. I'm hopeful that as we move away from the holidays, that number will stabilize and begin to drop back down, but I think we have a week or two more before we'll know what's going on there.
So, I mean, the reason why I ask is, obviously, a chart like this where it's spiking is very concerning. No one wants to see cases spread around our community. The paper will probably take that, put that on the front page, but, I mean, you mentioned it's an underlying goal. I thought the main goal was to not overrun the hospitals from the beginning.
That is the main strategy. Of course, for me, the underlying goal is to reduce infection and keep our community healthy and safe. And one of the big strategies there is to ensure the hospitals have staff and space to treat those that become hospitalized. And I do have data on that that I want to share. You know, we have about 1,400, just over 1,400 total hospital beds in Sarasota County. And when I look at those, we're about 70% occupied today, which is really pretty full. That's typical in season. Of those, 139 of those yesterday were COVID-19 patients and that's... I want to get my numbers right. That's out of about 960 total hospitalized and so 139 of those are COVID-19 patients. So, but again, we're in season and hospitals are there to serve our community and they typically are very full this time of year. So I remind you that every COVID patient that's hospitalized, even in a regular bed, has to, it uses up a tremendous amount of resources and staff because they're isolated. People have to gown up to protect themselves, to go in and out to care for that patient. And so it's not just a patient number, it's a tremendous amount of resources for each one of those. And then in our ICUs, there's about 114 beds total. They're also about 70% occupied. 29 of those patients as of yesterday were COVID-19 patients and we have the same resource concerns there.
Mr. Henry, Commissioner Moran has something for you.
Well, I... Yes.
I mean, okay, so these numbers, I mean, this is the challenge is, as we go forward with season, obviously, the number of people in the hospital spiked because that just happens every year, right? Because you have more population, as you mentioned. But when you look at the trend in terms of the hospitalization, I mean, we see a seven-day positivity. I'd like to see a seven-day hospitalization rate. I mean, then you can start to see kind of the trends week by week, but going back, I mean, 29 in ICU, 139, I mean, and maybe I'm wrong, but if I remember, it did hover around the 20, 30 almost this entire time. There were some dips in, when would that have been? September or whenever we were kind of really in good shape? There were some dips, but then that kind of went back up. But even before that, and now, I mean, we're hovering around the 20, 30. So it's interesting because it looks like we're having more cases, but the hospitalization rate isn't keeping up as to where it was before. Is that fair to say?
Absolutely fair. And I think that's, it's just a result of several things. One, there's more medical experience treating this disease and so our medical professionals are doing a fantastic job of keeping people out of the hospital even though there's more illness. They have more tools to treat people with as more drugs come online. And so those are all very, very positive things, but nonetheless, the balance can get out of whack as we're seeing in California if we're not watching it closely. So I'm certainly not here ringing the alarm saying, you know, panic, panic, but I want to be realistic and make sure the community knows it's really, really important that as individuals, we continue to do those things that have kept us safe all of this time. I know that vaccines are beginning to roll out and we'll talk about those in a minute, but even after people receive their vaccine, our recommendation is they continue to social distance and continue to wear masks when they can't, stay at home when they're sick, continue the hand washing because it's going to take time before the levels of virus in our community drop. And in fact, that's a question I get often as people start getting vaccines. When will we know when there's herd immunity? And I don't have a specific answer for that. Different science journals say 75% or so vaccinated, but for me, I know we're there when our percent positivity drops all the way down below three and I see the level of virus circulate in our community, drop way down, and then it becomes safer for us to do things without all those precautions. So that's really what I'll watch for in the future.
Anything else for Mr. Henry? Do you have anything else?
Oh, I do. That's the first segment just on virus. I want to talk about vaccines.
Oh, you're fine.
I could be done if you want me to be done, but I think...
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
So I want to pivot to vaccines and first...
So with that said, we have a question from Commissioner Moran.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, Chuck. Before you go on to the next slide, I want to take a minute on this one and make sure I fully understand it. Because I love the numbers and I think the data is incredibly helpful and it sends a message, but could you leave that up for one second? I just want to make sure I understand what I'm looking at. What I think is incredibly important is the positivity rate. It doesn't make a difference if you're testing 100 people today or 1,000 people today. What is the percentage of people that are actually testing positive, which I, to your point, has escalated from the fours to the eights? That is alarming. It would be a little concerning to me for sure. What I want to understand with this slide, though specifically, is do you think it would be important to see how many people were tested to get those numbers? For example, if I told you in January that twice as many people were tested than in December and you had those numbers, it might not be alarming. So that's what I'm, I'm just putting that, but hold on, before you move that slide, is we have a lot of third parties looking at this and they will look at that and I'm trying to decipher whether it's alarming or not. Is the positivity rate, in your opinion, is the positivity rate more important than the actual numbers?
So I do look very closely at the positivity rate, which takes into account how many people were tested. And if you look at it daily, it'll jump, it'll vary greatly depending on, some days we have very low numbers reported, which causes the positivity rate to go up in terms of overall testing, some days a lot more. And that's kind of a variation on how labs report. Over the holidays, things tend to get really wacky, to use the term, because if you think about it, doctor's offices close, labs close, and so you may have a two- or three-day stretch that maybe people may be tested, but no results are being reported until they open back up and then we get flooded with a ton of results.
Understood. That's exactly why I'm bringing this up, is that do you think an intellectually honest, fair comparison is anytime we show these, the number of people that showed positive as the same slide should shows how many people you tested?
So I think, I look at all of the markers. I wouldn't put one marker as more super valuable over the other. We look at percent positivity, we look at our rate of cases, which is how many cases per 100,000 and what that's doing in our community. We look at the number of new cases per day because new cases per day translates to work for contact tracers and case investigators. And if there's more new cases appearing every day in our community, then there's greater risk to our hospitals. So I think they're all equally important in describing and painting a picture of what's happening in our community.
I would agree. That's why I'm suggesting is, rather than show one slide, is either show it all or show none because people are going to grab on to this and I'm trying to understand, again, what I'm looking at because especially in our community, as Commissioner Ziegler mentioned, our numbers of people that would be tested in July might be incredibly different than people, the number of people that would be tested in January, which would obviously skew that chart grossly. So again, I'm not challenging it, I'm just...
Understand.
It depends on how many people you're testing. Is the positivity rate much more important to me personally, but I'm listening.
So to your point, in July, which was kind of our last peak for our community, hospitalizations were at 165 total then, which were below now. And we were averaging probably about 1,000 people tested every day that went into the positivity mix. This is small print, so I don't know how visible that is. That's the, our county-level report for yesterday. And the top bars, the gray bars, are indicating how many negative tests were done. And then the purple or the maroon bars indicate the percent positivity on a daily basis. And this is the last 14 days. And you can see we're averaging between 2,000 and 3,000 tests every day in this January, December, January timeframe as opposed to 1,000 tests a day in July because we have a lot greater testing capacity. And certainly post-holiday, we've seen a great increase in the amount of people wanting to be tested after traveling. Some of that's related to travel, some because they were required to get tested to travel. Some of it's related to illnesses post-travel. So Commissioner, you're absolutely correct. All of the data is important to look at and it was not my intent to skew it one way or the other. I look at all of the numbers, but no matter which ones I look at, the percent positivity continues to increase, our rates per, you know, per 100,000 continue to increase, the case numbers per day continue to increase. And again, we're not at ring the panic bell level yet, but we're at a place where I want to make sure that our community knows how important it is to continue doing the things we've done all along to keep us safe so that we can get control of this and maybe even back it down a little bit as we move through the remainder of season and into spring. Fair enough.
Commissioner Ziegler.
Yeah, good. Yeah, I mean, look, I'm fine. I mean, you put up slides and, you know, it shows the chart going up because, look, that's happening, but as Commissioner Moran mentioned, I think it's important to look at a holistic view. And I guess I kind of have two requests and one's for probably Jonathan, one's maybe for you, is next time you do an update, what I would like to see is, number one, I'd like to see an economic where we are with our businesses and everything locally, and that's more probably maybe Rob Lewis here locally, but, you know, how many businesses have, you know, not renewed their business tax? You know, what big employers do we know that have shut down? You know, how many people not just got the CARES funding but applied for the CARES funding, raised their hand and said that they're hurting? I'd like to see more of an economic deep dive in terms of specifically with COVID. And I don't know what data points we can actually get. I mean, I get that, but not many. But, you know, whatever, I think it's important to be part of the discussion. But number two is, for you, Mr. Henry, is I would like to see, and I know that this is part of the dashboard and I see it, but I think the community should get a presentation, and this is just a request from me, but is, when you break down the positivity rate to 10,000 residents, per 10,000 residents, the rate, per 10,000 residents, and compare us to other counties. That's what I would like to see because, as you mentioned, with the state, you know, 11%, 12%, but then we get down to us, we're at 8%. But I'd like to see Sarasota County verse the other counties and be able to really go through that, you know, where do we rank? And again, this is, these are data points that I look at when I look at this chart every, you know, every two days when we get it, but I think it'd be good to have a presentation that focuses on that because that'll help us as policymakers because, you know, it's one thing to say, oh, your numbers are high and, you know, all this stuff's happening, but if it's high across the country and across the state, we're very limited on how much impact we can have. Now, if we start to see our county kind of surpassing some of these other areas, then that's a red flag for us to say, okay, maybe we need to do something different. So from a policy standpoint, I think that would help us is the comparison to other counties. And when you break it down by 10,000 residents, it basically makes it equal across the state when you do that. So just a request for that.
And we do track the data per 100,000 residents. We can easily do the math to make it 10,000. We'll see what that looks like and use one or the other to present that data back to you.
And separate from the Health Department, we track that on a daily basis.
And I see it in the report. I just think it's important for us to discuss that because, you know, it's, when you just look at our numbers and just look at Sarasota County, there's a lot of stories that can be made from that. But when you take a step back and you compare us to other areas, I mean, I did this early on when people were, you know, demanding for a mask mandate and what I found, I mean, it's interesting, 67 counties, when you break that down, we were number two in best shape. There was one county above us that had a mask mandate and there were 26 counties below us that had a mask mandate. We did not have a mask mandate. We were number two best shape. That was, you know, months ago. I probably need to do that exercise again, but that was eye-opening for me. And that kind of data, I think, helps. I think our residents, as you mentioned, it is important. Look, social distance, if you don't need to be in someone else's face, don't be in someone else's face. Wear a mask. I mean, I think, you know, every store I go to, Publix, Lowe's, Home Depot, I mean, everyone's wearing a mask. So our citizens, you know, I think we are in better shape compared to the rest of the state as a whole and a lot of that's attributed to our citizens stepping up and doing this. So, you know, I think the data is important. It's also important for us to reinforce, but at the end of the day, it's the citizens that really get all the credit for where we're at right now. And, you know, obviously, cases, deaths, hospitalizations are all concerning, but I, you know, I think our citizens have done a good job to suppress that a little bit.
I would concur completely. Our citizens have been tremendous at doing the right things. And to be clear and to your point, Sarasota County's current level of virus activity, whether you look at rates per 100,000 or 10,000 or the percent positivity or new cases per day, all of our numbers trend very favorably when we compare ourselves to the state and to most of our neighbors. So, you know, this is not a Sarasota County's doing terrible. We're actually doing great, but our numbers are climbing as well, maybe not as fast as other areas of the state or the state as a whole. And so my message is just one of awareness and caution to our citizens. Okay, moving on to vaccines. Vaccines began to come into our, well, I should start first by thanking you as commissioners and thanking our municipal leaders out there. They've been very supportive through this vaccine rollout process that, there's no other way to describe it other than very bumpy for a number of reasons. So I just want to acknowledge the support I'm getting from all of those areas and appreciate that. Vaccines began to arrive in our community first to our hospitals, as was the plan mid-December so that they could begin vaccinating their frontline staff and keep them healthy and ready to treat people that come in. Health departments began receiving vaccine later in December. We at Sarasota County Health Department received our first shipment of vaccines on the 28th of December and began offering clinics on the 29th. So that was really important and the message given to us from our leadership in Tallahassee was to get vaccines out into arms as rapidly as possible. And that has a lot to do with the strategies we chose and I'll talk about those in a few minutes.
Mr. Commissioner Moran.
Chuck, I want to take a minute on this and then you can weave it into whatever you want to talk about today, too, is, you know, you don't get a chance to see the side of us commissioners and the emails that we get. As much as we talk about on the dais, it's just tough, you know, people are working and going about their day and they don't know the interminglings of some of this. Can you take a minute and explain to the folks of the difference of how you, you are an employee of the state of Florida? We have a unique relationship here in Sarasota, I get it, but is, there's some confusion here on this of what authority, what responsibility, what resources we have as the county versus this being a state initiative with state authority to bring this about and how we assist you in that? Can you take a minute on that? It's just, we're getting a lot of confusing emails on this.
Sure. I'll do my best.
Okay.
So I am, as I indicated earlier, your health officer and I am administrator for the Florida Department of Health in Sarasota. In Florida, unlike many states, which many of our constituents have arrived here from, Florida's the only state that I'm aware of that has a statewide integrated system of county health departments that are all part of the state agencies. So I am a state employee. Every county health department across the state of Florida are part of the state agency and state employees. We have a contract for service that we sign every year with our county that we serve that outlines the services we're providing as a state agency at the local county level. And there's a lot of advantages and sometimes disadvantages to that system, but in comparison, in other states and across the nation, county health departments are exactly that. They're a county entity or a city entity or a health district that serves multiple municipalities. So Florida's pretty unique in that setup. It gives us some great advantages for disaster response because we can move as a state agency and shift resources around. We can standardize policies across the state. Sometimes, they're not always exactly the policies that we want to see, but at least it's standardized across the state so it's not one county's doing one thing versus another. And so that's very helpful. But so that's the basic structure we have. Here in Sarasota County, I'm privileged to also serve as the county's human services director. So I'm in the county's organizational chart and I have line authority over the county employees that work in human services, veteran services, mosquito control. That's unique. I think Sarasota's the only county in the state that's doing that. I want to be clear for the fiscal folks out there, I'm not on the county's payroll. So that's not a role I'm paid to do by the county in terms of personal reimbursement, which causes people to sometimes say, what are you, crazy? You know, because, but it's not really. You know, my mission as a public health official is to try to provide the best public health service I can for my community. And when I look at broadly public health, and we're getting away from COVID and vaccines here a little bit, but broad public health, if I work at the base of the pyramid, which is where we get the biggest value for the dollar spent, the public health work at the base of the pyramid is all in the social determinants of health. So that's how well do we house people? How well do we address economic self-sufficiency? How well do we ensure that people have access to healthcare and health insurance? How do we take care of our homeless? So all of those things that fall, you know, what are we doing to educate folks? Those are really important things that impact the lifelong health of our community. And so the ability and the brilliance of my community and county to understand that and let me combine the county's human services assets, which do address that base, and marry that up with my state public health efforts to unify a strategic plan and do as much as we can in the community, has really worked well for us. And so that's the what's in it for me. It helps me accomplish my public health role in ways that I couldn't. And so that's really important.
Commissioner Ziegler.
Thank you, Chuck.
Well, and I think what, and I can't speak for Commissioner Moran, but I think where he was going with this is, as we approach this vaccine distribution discussion, the vaccine distribution's a federal program that's pushed down to the states, this, because there's a lot of confusion here. And then the state is basically overseeing the entire process in terms of vaccine distribution across the state and into individual counties. In Sarasota County, that means that we have a very limited role in distribution of the vaccine. Now, the role that we've elected to play, that we've raised our hand, and Jonathan can correct me if I'm wrong, but is Sarasota County has said, we will use the resources we have to assist the state in distributing this vaccine. So, you know, I think because of that, people have seen text messages from our social media posts and they just assume that the county is in charge of the distribution of the vaccine when really, it still is on the state to distribute the vaccine. Now, at the end of the day, taxpayers really don't care because they pay taxes and they want the vaccine and, you know, there are a lot of people that are interested in this. I mean, I think we have 150,000 residents that are over the age of 65. So I understand from the resident's side, I think there's some confusion, maybe with residents, but also with some of the media and the way they report it, is that, look, the state is in charge of distribution, the county has elected to play a supportive role in communications because we have a list, we can send text messages, we can send emails, we can do social media posts, we have the list locally, but that's the relationship that we currently have. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I just want to make that very clear as we go into this. So we're limited in our role and our role is basically a lobbying role. That's basically the only influence we can have is say, you know, we want more vaccine, we want, we would like more facilities opened up for vaccine distribution, we would like the system for the registration, you know, we'd like improvements on this. We can't actually take any actions up here to change any of that. All we can do is maybe write a nice looking letter that Commissioner or Chairman Mayo can sign, but our role in this is to play a supportive role, but then also lobby for any changes that we want to see.
So those are two really, for me, really important roles that, you know, number one, as a state employee, by statute, I can't lobby our state-elected officials. I can educate, provide information, answer questions, but I can't advocate and lobby. And so that is a function the county can do. And then the support is tremendous and many times, people don't see us as separate entities because we're interwoven here and it is our standard practice to utilize county communications as our method to get our health department information out to the community and we kind of work as one cohesive unit. But you are correct. In fact, rollout of vaccine, it's a federal program, it's being administered through the state. State Health Department and State Department of Emergency Management are the lead on that and we look to the counties to help support our efforts to do that in various ways. And so that is exactly how it is laid out.
Go ahead, Chuck.
So when I look at vaccines, we talked about them coming out to the hospital, arriving at the health departments on the 28th of December. Our directive was to get shots out as quickly as we can and get them into people's arms and not sit on the vaccines. So we began vaccinating folks the very next day. There was a little bit of a pivot that I just want to briefly touch on... There was a little bit of a pivot that I just want to briefly touch on in statewide guidance, in that, as all of us across the state planned, and things change in emergency disasters, so it's not at all a criticism or a complaint, but the plans were that vaccines were coming into the hospitals, that vaccines would, we knew they'd come out slowly to begin with, and we would begin hitting certain targeted populations, and as more vaccines came in, it would open up to larger groups of people. The governor's decision to, in late December, to open up the first round to include all individuals 65 and over in Florida, kind of changed the actions we need to take to rise to that task. I think it's right on the money in terms of who is being impacted by this disease in our communities, probably 70% of those hospitalized are over the age of 65, upwards of 90% of the deaths that occur in our community have been those over age 65, so I think absolutely that's the group we want to target. Our big challenge, and we'll talk about that when we get to the distribution, is vaccines are just beginning to trickle in, we're in the very early stages of this process, and, you know, when I have several thousand vaccines to offer and 150,000 people in the target group, it is like trying to get a ticket for the hot concert, it's very tough in any reservation system, and I'll talk about that in a minute in the direction we're moving that I think will really help our community. But I wanted to focus on vaccines for just a minute, so far in Sarasota County, at the health department, we received 3,500 doses that first week, we received 1,400 doses the next week. Last week, our allocation was initially at zero, but on Monday, the state was able to find 1,000 doses and get it to us for this week, so we stand at about 5,900 doses received so far, and we'll be out of vaccine by the end of this week. We are trying to push it out and get it in arms as quickly as we get it, and then immediately pivot to the state and say, "We're out of vaccine, we need more when you can get it."
Chuck, do me a favor, just those last two sentences, could you repeat into the record so that all the students out there that are going to write about this hear it again? How many?
The numbers?
In the last three or four weeks, against what size of initial 1A classification population?
So, at the health department, and that's not the only vaccines in our community, because the hospitals have received vaccines, and CVS and Walgreens are receiving vaccines to work through contract to vaccinate our long-term care facilities and staff, but at the health department, and we're the distribution point for most of the 65 and above, except for opportunities to partner, and we'll talk about those in a minute, we've received, our first week allocation was 3,500 doses. That, by the way, was probably the second tiered highest allocation for health departments across the state, some of the, you know, Miami-Dade, Hillsborough, some of the larger health departments got more, there was a grouping of those, and then the next tier down was 3,500 consistently, that's what Manatee got, that's what we got, so it's just what was available, and they distributed. The second week, we got 1,400 doses, 1,400 doses, Manatee did the same, so again, second-tiered allocation, but the allocations are based on the amount the state has, then they have to split up, and I'll explain that. The third week, our allocation actually came out as zero, I think you all were made aware of that, I don't know who pushed where, but on Monday, we got notified that they did move some things around and get 1,000 doses to us, as well as to Manatee. You know, again, we weren't being treated differently when I looked across the west coast of Florida, Lee County got some doses in the initial allocation for this week, and Hillsborough County, nobody else did, and so, you know, we weren't the only zero out there, and that's a function of how much vaccine the state has to give, and I believe with all of my heart that at the federal level and the state level and at the local level, we're all working as hard and as efficiently as we can to get these vaccines out rapidly. And so I don't know exactly where the holdups are, I haven't had time to study things at the state and federal level, but I know the state allocation numbers, and the initial allocations the state got were closer to a half million doses for our entire state, but those dropped in the last few weeks, and this week, they had 254,000 doses allotted for the entire state, and that caused them to make some really difficult decisions on what vaccines go where, and so there are a couple of big vaccine sites that are state-supported in the big cities that a lot of the vaccine went to, there's also vaccines required to go to Walgreens and CVS out of the state allotment to care for our, and vaccinate our long-term care residents, which is really important. There's a new pilot that I'm sure the public has heard about, about 30,000 doses were allocated to Publix to implement this pilot, to get the pharmacies doing vaccines, just like they do for our flu shots. That pilot is concentrated mostly in our rural communities, where there may not be another, a lot of outlets, but it's going to rapidly expand as vaccine becomes available, and so our hope is that not only Publix, but other pharmacies across the state will soon have the vaccine, which is what was in the original plan, to help us with these large numbers. Right now, we can only work with what we get, so the 5,900 doses that we've received at Sarasota County Health Department, the majority of that has been pushed out to our 65-plus community that are in that 1A target group. The 1A group also includes frontline healthcare workers, which everybody thinks of as hospital, but remember, your dentist is in everyone's mouth, your primary care physicians have to be there, and so as you look through all the healthcare community, they can't do their jobs to care for all of us if we can't get them vaccinated as well, so it's a lot bigger than just hospital, includes our first responders, fire medics that are out there on the front lines as well, and so the doses that we get, we're working to serve both our 65 and above community and our healthcare workers with those as quickly as we get them. We have not chosen in Sarasota County yet to ask, although the county is standing by ready to assist with whatever, pretty much anything I ask them to do if it's possible, we have not moved to a drive-through setting yet, because I didn't feel we had enough vaccine to make it worth putting those resources in the field, and that's been my direct conversation with Jonathan and his team. We were really thinking that we were going to move there in week two, after our 3,500 doses week one, and then when we got our allocation of 1,400 doses, it didn't make sense to me, because 1,400 doses I can distribute in two days and it's gone, so.
All right, let's just pause for one minute, Commissioner Cutson here.
Yeah, you've mentioned 65 and above several times, could you just be very clear, because we get a lot of questions on this issue, is why are we only doing 65 and above, why aren't we starting at 75, 85, and I understand that's a, you know, that's a state directive, and I just want to make sure that people understand why we're doing it to the aged community that we're doing it.
Thank you very much for that question, I have some notes to make sure I remember to mention that, but I'll certainly talk about it now. Our, again, as a state agency, I follow state directives, and our directives have been to follow the governor's executive order, the executive order simply says tier one is frontline healthcare workers that have direct patient contact, those individuals 65 and above, and our long-term care facility residents and staff that cares for those residents, that's the universe. Questions have been asked, can we, can we split the elephant up, so to speak, and tier it out so we can address maybe 90 and above first, and 80 and above, and great ideas, consistently, the responses that, "No, the governor's executive order says 65 and above, and that's who we need to offer it to," and so that's what I'm constrained to do. I did verify that with my state office this morning, because I too watched the news last night and saw some activity in one of our larger counties to the north, it appeared they were beginning to do that in their appointment system, and I was told that was the vendor that they were working with that did that, and that they were correcting that, and going back to the state policy that has not changed, so that's where I'm at. The other constriction I have is, and I get this question a lot, is why are we giving it to people that aren't Sarasota County residents when it's Sarasota County's allotment? Why are we giving it to out-of-state residents? And again, the directive in the executive order says plainly, any individual 65 and above, it does not have a residency requirement, so therefore, when I'm running vaccine pods, I don't have that option to restrict it to our residents under the executive order, and so I understand, there's a great suggestions, we get a lot of great suggestions from our citizens on how we could do this in segments and maybe be more orderly about it, but I have constraints on the state side that I have to work within as well.
Okay, good, Commissioner Ziegler.
Are we doing Q and A right now, or are we waiting for the presentation?
I've got just a couple more items, and I'll pause for Q and A about vaccines.
I will hold and wait for that.
And then we'll move to the distribution systems, which will be the final segment. I did want to share that the state, and I have to qualify these numbers, or they lag a little bit behind, but this was the latest data that I was able to pull out of the state system in terms of vaccines distributed by county, and that includes hospitals and the CVSs and whatever's coming to Sarasota County for any of the tier 1A group, as well as the health department, and you can see, I just highlighted Sarasota and Manatee, because often people are looking at both counties, we've both received about the same amount of vaccine, and I can tell you from a health department's perspective, because I work with Dr. Bensee very closely in Manatee, as well as Dr. Pepe in Charlotte County, we're all pushing out the vaccine almost as soon as we receive it, and ending up at the end of every week was zero. But I think it's important to know that that number's probably around 18,000 now, because it lags a little bit behind. I also look at, and this is on the state's public report, you can look at vaccines distributed by county that are in the system, and again, this data lags as well, I think it's really important to note in a positive for our county that we've received almost 18,000, put almost 18,000 doses into arms, which is almost everything we've received. Not all counties are able to do that, and that's, again, probably not a health department function, it's a function of the overall process. We're very fortunate in Sarasota to have partners like Sarasota Memorial, they finished their frontline employee vaccination process and had additional vaccine remaining, and instead of just sitting on that, they called us up last week, middle of the week, David Brand and I had a conversation, they wanted to stand up an opportunity for 65 and above over the weekend at their health department, so we provided support by, through the reservation system for that in any other way we could, they staffed it along with some state resources we were able to pull in for them, and did about 3,000 vaccines Saturday and Sunday out of their hospital allotment for our 65 and above, again, pushing out available vaccine as rapidly as possible to the community. There's partnerships like that that help us as a community move things forward quicker. I've had discussions with Doctor's Hospital and with Venice Bayfront Regional, both entities are certainly willing to help with community efforts as vaccine becomes more available. You know, in fact, the last conversation I had with Venice Regional Bayfront was, they were ready to go to somewhere in Venice and hold a big event through the weekend and try to staff it, all they needed was for me to give them the vaccine. And so unfortunately, I don't have vaccine to give them, we can relay that to the state, there's a number of grassroots efforts that I get contacted about, where groups want to get together and plan these big events, and I think those will happen as vaccine becomes available, but right now, the limited number, amount of vaccine coming into the state is the limiting factor on what we're able to do in our local community, so I didn't want our community to think that all the vaccine that's coming into Sarasota isn't getting out to people right away, I think we're doing a really good job of getting all of that vaccine out when we look at where we're at compared to other counties, but we are limited by what comes into our county.
Yeah, that point about Sarasota Memorial, I mean, I want to back up to that, I think that's a great story and a testament to their partnership, this is a public hospital, I mean, this is a hospital that we pay a lot of taxes that go to them, and, you know, I know sometimes there's always debate about that, but for them to step up like this, I think earns them a lot of credit in this community, and to be able to do the vaccine that they had on their supply, to be able to get that out to our local community after they took care of their frontline workers, kudos to them, and so I think it's important to mention that. Let me ask you a couple of questions about the vaccine, this is not distribution-related, this is just in general for the vaccine, when you get the vaccine, can you still get COVID?
I think the science is still out on that, but I would, I would say, any vaccine can be overcome, and people can get the disease the vaccine is intended to prevent, and a lot of that depends on your immune system and response to the vaccine, and it depends on the dose or exposure, so if you get a large enough dose of a pathogen, it can overwhelm the vaccine and you can still get sick. The good news is that for most people, that's not going to happen, and if it does, you'll probably have a milder case, because you already have antibodies that your body's producing to help fight that disease.
So if someone gets, and I just have, and my exercise here that I've been doing since the beginning is people just launch questions at me, and for two weeks, I just gather them and say that I will present this at the meeting for Chuck, to hear directly from the expert instead of me, so just bear with me, I have a bunch of them, but most of them are with the registration, distribution, but just real quick, so with the science still being out, if you can get it or not with the vaccine, now, if someone has a vaccine, they come into contact with someone with COVID, are they still going to have to quarantine?
Right now, our policy is that yes, we would ask them to quarantine if they're direct contact, especially, you know, we're going through the first and second dose phase, and we can talk about some of that in a minute, but it's still, you're still a contact, even if you've had a vaccine, and so we have some concerns, and I think when we have a little bit more experience, some of those policies may change, but right now, we're considering a contact-to-contact.
Okay, and then lastly, before distribution, before we get into that, are, do you believe that people are going to need this vaccine shot every year like the flu shot? Is that going to be kind of standard practice, or?
That one I can't answer right now, I don't think the, even the scientists have landed on what that's going to look like, and I think time will tell, and I remind you that these vaccines are authorized under an emergency use authorization, so they're not even fully approved, and so that, that doesn't mean they're not safe, they've been approved for distribution based on the study and the methods that the trials were run, but what's going to happen in the future is we'll begin to gather data on, well, what happens if you only get one dose, and what does that do to your immune system over time, and does two doses make it last a lot longer, or not, and, you know, do we need to quarantine people that are contacts after they've had the vaccine, or, and so those are, those are questions that science will answer over time, but in the effort to stop this pandemic, a great vaccine is, two great vaccines have been produced, and there's more in the pipeline, I think the more rapidly we can get that out to everyone and bring the levels of infection down in our community, the quicker we'll return to something more normal, and then if you're really interested, you can still go back and read as science evolves and answers all those questions.
So, one more, and I don't know if you can answer this question, but I don't know who else to ask, but I know there's a local condo association here, and the owner there purchased property, then, and there has a condo in that building, and they require temperature checks every time you walk in to go to your own property, and they also limit the number of guests that are allowed to go to your property, is that legal, is that any, number one, is Sarasota County mandating anything like that, and number, that you know of, and number two, I mean, have you heard of that, is that allowed, or?
So I'm not aware of governmental mandates, other than local ordinances for masks, and, you know, any ordinance like that is very tough to enforce, which is why I believe all of you haven't moved that direction, it's not that you don't support wearing masks when they're needed. I think what happens on private property is a condo association decision, and I would have them go back and talk to their attorneys about whether that's legal or not, from a public health perspective, ensuring that we know that people are healthy as they're coming and going is not a bad idea. I've not recommended temperature checks at every door in county buildings, because that's just one measure, it's more important to me that people understand they should stay home if they're sick. If people are going to come to work when they're sick, they're probably going to take Tylenol and not get caught at the door.
I just, I personally don't know.
I want to teach people to do the right thing, which is what you've all done, I think, in your push towards everything we've done in Sarasota County, in Sarasota County, just encourage people to do the right thing.
I personally have no idea how that can be legal, to be able to access your own private property, that you have to do a temperature check, and then you're told how many people are allowed to come onto your private property, that may be family that are visiting for dinner, and to be able to limit it to two people. I don't know if this will grow as the vaccine gets out there, and then people require now vaccine papers to be able to go to your condo, or something like that, but, I mean, this is something that we're going to hear from, I think, as we go forward, it's going to be an issue we're going to face, and I already know one resident that told me about this, and I just don't know how that is legal, but that's not a, I guess, discussion or debate we have to have today, but.
It's certainly not a public health directive, and it's not an area that I really have expertise in, in terms of property law.
All right, go ahead Chuck.
Any other questions around vaccines in general, before we move to the appointment system? Great, hearing. system? Great. Hearing, I talked a little bit about the governor's directive to vaccinate all those 65 and above and, and what that means for Sarasota County with 37% of our population, full-time population at 65 and above. And then you add to that our seasonal population, many of which are 65 and above. And it's quite a challenge, especially with the small amount of vaccine coming in, to serve those individuals. So we knew right upfront when that was the direction we were pivoting to, that, and we needed to get vaccine out quickly. No matter what system we picked, it was going to be quickly overwhelmed because the demand for the vaccine is so high within that group. We went with the Eventbrite system. And I'll just explain a little bit about why we chose that. We needed, we needed to pick something that would allow us to move vaccine quickly, as that was our directive. And we weren't ready with a different reservation system in place because we didn't anticipate serving such a large group so quickly in this process until those directives changed. So the Eventbrite system has, has worked very well for us from a technical standpoint. Our, that system has not crashed. We've put out, I think the maximum was when we assisted Sarasota Memorial with their event, put out 2,700 slots.
Chuck, let me just interrupt you because Commissioner Moran has something right at this juncture.
10-second question. I just want to, this is, this is a good example. As we move into these topics, that was a state initiative, not the county.
Yes.
Thank you. The Eventbrite system, because we got a lot of emails about it, they thought that was a county, they thought that was a county enrollment system that we put in place. Again, I'm not challenging it, and I'm not saying it was good or bad. I'm just, this is one of those opportunities we can do differentiation, is that was a state initiative.
I own that as your local health official. Yes. So we, we, we looked around quickly at what systems were available that would help us get back those first 3,500 vaccines out quickly. And so the intention was never that that was going to be our forever system, and not because we didn't think the system would work. And, and it probably caused more anxiety because of the demand than we anticipated. But primarily, we didn't want that to be our permanent system because we're very concerned about ensuring that residents that don't have access to computers have equal access to vaccines and that, that we reach our entire population, not just those with computers. So that was put in place to move vaccines quickly as we began receiving our early vaccines. The system has worked, you know, from, from our side of the fence, you know, we put out 2,700, 100 appointments in 15 minutes, they're full. We know who's coming each hour for, for a two-day period for each of those appointments. And so it's very efficient in that way. We've come to learn that it's extremely frustrating for consumers because, you know, as I think one of our local news channels probably correctly joked, it's like trying to get the hot concert ticket, and you're all sitting around clicking your computer forever. And, and we don't want to do that to our seniors. And so we're working to move to a different platform, I think, that will reassure them. But the Eventbrite system itself has, has worked well in terms of scheduling the appointments rapidly. For those that are concerned about cost, it didn't cost us anything. I've seen some emails about how much did we pay for that system that everybody hates? It was free. You know, the Eventbrite software makes its money by taking a percentage of the value of tickets you're selling, and our tickets were sold for zero. So it was something we could use at no cost to us right away to schedule people and get vaccine out immediately. And, and that's why we, we went with that system. We weren't alone. There's a number of counties across the state that have used that system or are currently using that system. At the same time, we were informed probably that very week that the state was working on a reservation system. They were piloting a couple of them, and they thought they'd have them ready in the next week. That week turned into two weeks, but they have moved forward with that. In fact, yesterday, I sat with emergency management folks and my folks, and we looked at an initial rollout of one of their systems, and they went, the vendor went through it online. Of course, it generated a number of questions we have as we, you know, in terms of how well it's going to serve our needs. And so we're waiting to get responses from those questions. But the state has, hopes to have that live, they said yesterday, in the next four days. Simultaneously, we're aware the state has another system they're piloting out there, and Sarasota County, our partners at EM, has also been working on developing our, our own Everbridge system that we're already familiar with and use for a lot of emergency response, and working with that company to see how that can be used. And we've done some piloting with that. We haven't made a decision on which one of those systems is going to work best for us and give us the functionality we want. And to the greatest extent, assurances that it's going to work and not crash. Of course, that can't be guaranteed with any system, and we've watched other counties come online with phone banks that immediately crash and other systems that immediately crash. And so this is going to be a process we all have to work through. We hope that what we put in place doesn't, doesn't experience those problems, but I can assure you, if it does, we'll work through them quickly and get it back up and running. What we want is a system that we can begin to use, that our community can get familiar with, that we'll have for the long term. What we didn't want to do is go from Eventbrite to something else to, and then into another system with the state and just keep rolling through different systems and confuse our community. So we, we, it's our intent at this time that the next 65 and above event we have with vaccines next week, depending on what my allotment is, will be scheduled through this new system. The new system, the things that we're looking for is a reservation system that folks can get into either by phone or through the computer and register, sort of get in line electronically and know that they're in line. And then as vaccines come in, we can, you know, pull it from the top, first in, first out. If we get 2,000 vaccines, we take the top 2,000 off the list, send them out of reservations, say, come get your vaccine, and continue to roll through it that way. I'm hopeful that the system gives me flexibility, that when we reach a point that, that we're able to supply vaccine to a large site every day, and we're rolling through a lot of people every day, that we'll be able to take additional vaccine and maybe target different areas, which will help residents that, so we don't have to have one central place that everybody drives to. It's probably going to be a little bit of time before we're at that point. But if we get there, I want to make sure the system we put in place allows me to, to understand how many people are in line for vaccines from different areas so that we can do that efficiently.
Chuck, we have Commissioner Ziegler.
Yes. So to kind of lead into this, look, this vaccine, no one thought it'd be done by the end of the year. They rushed through, they got a vaccine on the street. You know, our decision at that point was to either hold on to all the vaccine until we have enough for everyone, then start distributing it, or to get it out on the street as quick as possible. Obviously, the common sense is get it out on the street as quick as possible. Now, that presents some challenges that we've seen because there are a lot of people that want the vaccine, and there's a lot more demand than there is supply. And so then what system do we put in place? You tried to launch this Eventbrite. I will tell you the frustrations from the citizens. And again, we're fielding this because people think that the county's in charge, even though we're not. Doesn't matter. At the end of the day, citizens just want vaccines. If they live in Sarasota County and they have a concern, I don't care if it's with the local, state, or federal government, it's a concern of mine. I think the major, and the biggest frustration, that's why it's good I, I'm hearing that we're going to move to something else, is that every day, citizens are going on, well, first, for the first couple of days, they didn't even know at 3:30 is when kind of the window opens up to be there. So they're checking their phone frantically, they're checking online frantically. And that experience, like you mentioned, like rock, you know, a concert ticket. This isn't a concert ticket, these are people's lives. So obviously, they're even more concerned. But it's the same frustrating experience. And, you know, what I've heard from citizens is, look, I'm fine being number 700, you know, 74,132, as long as I know I have a place in line. Right now, they just feel like they go on that site, and when they hit it, it's sold out, sold out, sold out, sold out every day. So it kind of gives you, you're basically hopeless. But when they get in and they get a number, now they're going to be, you know, in line. At least they know that there's some hope. It might be later on, but I think people understand that there is a limited number of supply of vaccine, and that vaccine's growing. And to be able to be in line and know that down in the future, they're going to get it. So I think that's the disconnect. And I hope we can fix it fast. I mean, I know the county has kind of stepped up. And again, this is where I have full faith in our county government. I can't say I had as much faith before I was elected, but now that I've been here and I've seen the way they execute and the stuff they do, I have full faith that if Sarasota County's in charge of something, they're going to execute. And because of that, you know, I, I, I was happy to hear that the county went and basically concurrently or parallel was building a system as like a fallback, just in case we need to use it. And it maybe implements some of these features. And again, that's where the county is stepping up, raising their hand and saying, look, we're going to play a supportive role. We don't need to do that. We could just say, oh, the state's, you know, good luck, state, you know, whatever. But county's playing that supportive role, and we're here. I don't want us to sit on the sidelines and question a system, whether it's from the state or anywhere else, and, and not be able to solve this problem. I think we need to solve this problem. I can't tell you how many phone calls, how many texts, how many call, how many emails I've gotten from citizens that are saying, you know, hey, let's get something. Like, I'm tired of going on there at 3:30. I have a family member that just this morning went to Hillsborough to get a vaccine because they're so frustrated trying to use our system. That kills me, right? I mean, I always look at ourselves competing with other counties, even though they're friends and they're neighbors, whatever. But, you know, I want us to kind of lead the pack. And I know that at the end of the day, all of the problems stem from the vaccine supply. And until we have vaccine, it's not going to solve all the problems. But what we can do to better that experience, I think, is so, so important. And I, I would just encourage you, and again, we're in a lobbying role. I can't direct you. We don't control the system. But let's get to a system that people actually feel like they've taken a step forward when they log in, rather than sitting there every day pressing refresh and getting frustrated. Because then they just email us every day at 3:31 when they get sold out and they email us. And I just want to solve that problem for the citizens.
So, and I appreciate that tremendously, Commissioner. You should know, on the, on the flip side of that, that first week we were given vaccines, we were one of the early, early counties out there with the vaccines as soon as we received them. A week ahead of Hillsborough, they didn't open up till 65 and above until a week after we did. And, and in fact, some residents from Hillsborough did get into our system, and that angered some folks here, why are they down here? But everybody's going anywhere they can to get the vaccine because it's in such short supply.
Chuck, why don't you give us the rest? I'll see if any commissioners have anything else, and then I've got some. But as the chair, I try to wait to the end.
Well, the only other comment I really had, other than trying to answer your questions, I think I've described where we're moving. We, timing on that, we hope to be there by the end of this week, certainly no later than early next week in that decision and standing up a new system. And then I, as your county partner, I, I appreciate that you're not sending me everything. But I do get from the chair a number of emails so that I have a flavoring of what you're all getting. And I, and I have tried my best to contact them or have my staff contact them or write them back. We want to reach out to our citizens like you. We want the very best for our community here in Sarasota. And we just ask for continued patience. We're going to get this system online. Vaccine will eventually begin to flow in. It may take another three or four weeks before we get to a level that we can do daily events. And in two more weeks, we're going to be starting the second dose. As our first doses were given on the 29th, so that puts it to January 26th, when we get that 28-day. For citizens out there, we're getting, we're getting a lot of questions. You know, our website said we, we canceled the appointments that were given to folks that came through our Health Department site. I want to be clear, we canceled those appointments because we don't plan to be at our Health Department site when we're doing the second doses in two weeks. For a number of reasons, we're limited on how many I can run through there in a day. And I believe as more vaccines come in, we're going to exceed my capacity. So we're moving out to probably a drive-through site. That will not only give us more space, but it will allow us to ratchet up the volume we're doing or down based on how much vaccine we're getting. And it will allow us to run days or periods when we're doing second doses and other periods where we're doing first doses. And so I think it'll be more efficient as we move to that. And so everyone that had appointments will be contacting them through their email and phone numbers that, that we collected in their initial appointment and telling them what day to come get their second dose and where we're going to be. So those things will happen. The only reason that wouldn't happen is if we get a federal directive or a state directive otherwise. Until then, we're continuing to plan forward for second doses as required under the current plan.
That said, any other questions from commissioners? I see Commissioner Ziegler up again. Ron Kutsinger first, Commissioner Kutsinger first, then Commissioner Ziegler.
Thanks, Chuck. Appreciate the update. I was able to spend the day with you on Friday and saw the great work your staff and team is doing. So you get a lot of criticism, but behind the scenes, you guys are working very hard and desperately trying to get the vaccine to people who need it with limited resources. And again, the, you know, the issue is, we just don't have enough vaccine to get out there. But you guys are doing everything you can to get it out there in the best possible way under the circumstances. So I really appreciate that. I just want to summarize to make very clear, because along with the other commissioners, we're getting a lot of input on this, calls, texts, emails. And we've sent a lot of them to you. And also, you, you took the time to write back to a lot of those people individually. I appreciate that because I know you're a very busy person. That means a lot for, for, for you to sit down and do that. So appreciate that. As a county commissioner, we have no authority over this program. Is that correct?
You know, the, the state is responsible for the program. As a county commissioner, you know, I work for you as your local state representative at the Health Department. So I certainly listen to your concerns and want to do what I can to make sure we're meeting your expectations.
But as far as what you're required to do here with the vaccine you receive, we don't, we don't tell you how to do that. We, we don't have authority to do that.
That's correct.
Okay. Also, we, we have no authority to change the age group to which this vaccine needs to be distributed according to the state guidelines here.
Well, the vaccine that's coming in is coming into the state Health Department, and I have to follow the state guidance and directives. Perhaps one day, when there's enough vaccine that it can be distributed directly to other entities, they may be able to do other things. But my vaccine always will follow whatever state guidance is there.
Okay. Along those lines, we, we do not have any authority to exclude non-residents from receiving the vaccine. Because, again, these are all questions that have come to us repeatedly. I just want to make sure that people understand, you know, we understand the frustration, believe me. But at the same time, we're not in a position to change those rules or, or have authority over that.
Yes, sir. That's correct. And that goes back to the governor's executive order and the interpretation of the executive order that's been given to us as a state entity.
Okay. And then just for my benefit, if you would, a decision was made to only do these at the downtown health clinic there. Could you help me on that? Could we talk about, you know, South County's looking at, I think, wait a minute, why do we have to drive all the way downtown? Is there any, you know, maybe at some point, getting this so that we're doing the vaccinations?
Thank you very much for that question. That's something I skipped over in my notes that I meant to talk about. You know, right now, because of the low numbers of vaccine coming into the community and the constraints that I have to open up vaccine events to all individuals 65 and over, it doesn't make sense for us to, to move around to different areas. For example, and I think I shared this example with you, I could schedule an event in Northport, and trust me, the city of Northport has places they've already identified. They'd love for me to come. And then I could advertise it, and it could be that not a single person gets into that vaccine event from Northport, and everybody drives down there. And so as, you know, we started out the Health Department because that was easiest for me. All my vaccine refrigerators are there. And as many of you have heard, the vaccine is delicate. We have to make sure that it stays frozen until we're ready to use it and then refrigerate it. And once we open a vial, we have to use everything in that vial. And so it's just a lot easier in this initial thing to get our processes down and open up right there where all that's handy. As we move to a drive-through site, we're going to try to pick a place that's near the interstate so there's easier access for North and South. And I will, I will tell you already, because I just know from experience, it doesn't matter what site I pick, there's going to be people not happy with that site. As I said earlier, it's my hope that when more vaccine is available, that we can operate not only the big central site, but then have vaccine that I can go and do as we did with testing these pop-up events geographically, which would really be beneficial to our citizens so they don't have to drive so far. And if we put the right reservation system in place, I'll be able to look to see, you know, if I'm going to go to Northport with 500 doses, I can pull the first 500 people from those zip codes off the list. That probably won't happen until there's enough vaccine that we can get creative like that. I also just wanted to say that, you know, our, our communities of color, which there's an event that Sarasota Memorial is doing today, and we're partnering to help them as well as the county in Newtown, out of concern, those groups have been, certainly are impacted more by this virus than others. And that's national data. So they're doing a small event there with a little bit of leftover vaccine they have. Our ability to do those kinds of things is limited in the state capacity right now because of the, the need to offer it to everyone as equally as possible. But the city of Longboat, who is probably our oldest demographic in a zip code. our oldest demographic in a zip code, would love us to be there. Obviously, the city of Northport would love to take care of their residents. The city of Venice, that's our second oldest population group, would love for us to be there. And we want to be everywhere for everyone. Many homeowners associations, especially those that are 55 and above, have already contacted me to say, hey, we've got 200 citizens over 65. You can use our clubhouse. When can you come? And those are all things we want to do. I just have to wait until I have the vaccine to be able to do them. And it'll probably come, but it's going to be a little bit of a wait.
Okay, Commissioner Ziegler?
Almost done, I promise. It's just two weeks' worth of complaints and questions and concerns.
I'm doing fine, so go ahead.
So, yeah, and just to be clear, what Commissioner Cutzinger mentioned about the experience with the health department, it's interesting. I've gotten a lot of complaints about the registration system, but everything else, people are very satisfied with. So your staff's doing a great job. It's just the technology part. I think people are having, that's the speed bump here.
I am very blessed with tremendous staff, and the county staff. I will have to tell you, our human services group is part of our family. We're blended together, and they're stepping up to the plate and helping us with these vaccine things, just like my staff. They've been tremendous.
Yeah, and the experience when people finally get in the door, it, I don't know if it's the staff, or if it's just they're thrilled that they're getting the vaccine, has been nothing but enthusiasm and positivity. So that's been nice. Let me ask you, and I just have a couple of quick questions. You can answer them quickly if you want. But what's the status of testing and vaccines in Sarasota County? Just an overview. Where can people get tests? What kind of tests can they get? And then also, the vaccine, you have the health department, is there, you know, anywhere else, or?
So I'll start with testing. Testing is available broadly at two state sites, one at the RL Taylor Center in North Sarasota. That's a walk-up testing site operated by the state. The other is at the Greyhound Racetrack on University, also in North Sarasota. And that one's a drive-up testing site. At both of those state-run sites, you can get a rapid test, in which you should get results in shortly after you leave the site. And you can also get a PCR test, which goes off to a lab. You know, the rapid test looks for the antigen to the virus, and it's a valid test. It's very good if you're sick. It has what I call a smaller window to catch a positive than the PCR. PCR is a little bit more sensitive because it's looking for DNA evidence of the virus. They will give you the rapid unless you ask for the PCR. If you ask for it, they'll do both. In addition to that-
And it's free?
That's free. Those are free.
And hours? When are they open?
I think they're open from 8:00 to 5:00.
Okay, every day, or?
Every day. Occasionally, they'll close for holiday, like they closed on Christmas Day, on New Year's Day, but we make announcements about that. In addition to that, we partner with the school board to operate some access to testing for students and families at a location in Northport, one in Osprey on our main health department site. Those are PCR tests. We have limited hours in Northport from 9:00 to 11:00, and then we move to Osprey from noon to 2:00. And we do them from 11:00 to 2:00 at our main health department. We could expand those hours if the demand is there. But these tests were specifically put in place as schools started, so that school-aged children and their families would have access to get testing, to help move through our policies in the school district. Those tests are run at the state lab. And the reason we have the times on those specific sites is so that we can curry those samples directly to the lab each evening and get the results back the next evening. So that's been working very well, and we'll continue to do that. And then there's a number of commercial entities, CVS drugstores. I'm not aware of Walgreens, but they may be, a number of doctors' offices and urgent care clinics. So there's a number of resources across the community where people can go and get tested. On the vaccine side, vaccines right now are only being, the shipment of those is being controlled at the state level. And that, because of the limited number of vaccines, that process works. The best way I can describe it is that early in the week, usually, I'm told on Monday or Tuesday, the state gets a number from the federal government that says, this is how many vaccines we can send you next week. This week, it was 254,000. The state then has a couple of days to figure out, of all the hospitals and all the long-term care and all the health departments, how do we want that split up? They send that information back to the federal level. The vaccines are direct shipped from the feds to those entities, and then distributed in the community. And we usually find out at the end of the week, Friday, what allocations we're going to get shipped. And then we usually don't actually get the shipping data until Monday morning, and the vaccines usually arrive for the week Monday afternoon or Tuesday. So that's the process. And right now, vaccines are only going out to the hospitals, to health departments, and to beginning to come out to community health centers. Now, we have two large community health centers that operate in Sarasota County, our Center Place Health, which is our federally qualified health center, and then MCR out of Manatee has a couple of clinics. There are federally qualified health centers as well in Sarasota. I'm not aware that either of those have received vaccines yet, but I am aware that they're beginning to ship directly to some of the federally qualified health centers across the state.
And no CVS or Publix yet?
The only vaccines that CVS is getting right now-
For long-term care.
-at Walgreens are the contracts specific to long-term care. So they're taking care of skilled nursing facilities and ALFs. And the state is doing some of those as well with their strike teams. There is a plan to contract with, broadly with drugstores. It's a different contract as vaccine becomes available, to put it out there so it'll be available like we do our flu shots now. And we look forward to that because it'll be more access for our community. But I think we're probably a month away from that.
So we have 150,000 residents, 65 and older. A lot of those are in South County. When I worked for Vern Buchanan, our congressional district was the second oldest out of 435 in the entire country, when it was just Sarasota-Manatee. Venice was always the oldest area, right? I mean, I think they always say Venice is the place where people from Sarasota go to retire. And so I'm fully supportive. Whatever we can do to start shifting resources and focus down to South County, I think is very important. Drive-through versus office, I think the experience in the office has been great. People are very positive, but people are concerned if you get a lot of people going in there. So a drive-through, a lot of people don't want to get out of their car and go into a building, or go in to get the vaccine or whatever. So the more we can look at that, I think that would be good.
So just understand, as we move to the drive-through, and I agree, it's safer for the patients, it's certainly safer for my staff. If you think about how we're trying to social distance, I've got, you know, my immunization teams that are seeing 800 people come through my building in one day. Even if we try to keep them spaced and they leave happy, it still increases our exposure risk. So drive-throughs are much safer from that aspect. They do present some challenges because we have to hold people for at least 15 minutes after the vaccine and observe them. Now, we're trying to observe them in cars instead of sitting in chairs. And we will get concerns from citizens that have mobility issues in terms of transportation, not having access to the drive-through vaccines. And so, as we shift to that, I hope as vaccines become available, we'll have other outlets that we can reach out to those that have transportation challenges and those that are homebound. That's one of the reasons we're working hard to make sure that in our healthcare worker vaccination strategy, we're vaccinating our home healthcare agencies, because that's who's going to help us carry vaccine to the homebound and some of these clients when vaccine is available.
Two more things. Number one, the second dose. How is that going to eat up the vaccine supply? Because my understanding is, you get the vaccine, you got to come within 28 days to get the second dose. So if we have those people coming back to basically, you know, they have to, I don't know, double dip almost, right? I mean, they got to come back in line. Is that going to delay additional people getting into the vaccine process? Or how do you manage the supply versus, you know, when you have the second dose going on?
So that's a great question, and that's a problem I hope to have. I told Jonathan, I'm ready to be done with not enough vaccine and move on to not enough staff to give the vaccine. And then, you know, right now, the state's working to bring on extra resources around the state that can help augment us. We have a tremendous number of folks in our community that have already said, put me on the list of volunteer when you have clinics and enough vaccine for us to come and work. And so we will utilize every resource we can to push the vaccines out. I don't anticipate that being a huge issue for us.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm just concerned with the supply when you have, you know, the second dose needed to be able to be consumed by someone that is kind of in the middle of the process. That's where my concern is, right?
Well, and I share that concern, but, you know, when I look at, right now, the way the vaccines have been approved and the way they went through the trials, you know, both the two vaccines that are being used in the U.S., the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccine, both require second doses, one at 21 days, one at 28 days. And those doses are required to achieve the effectiveness of the vaccine in that 90% to 95% range. And so we want to stick with that and follow that. The CDC guidelines tell us for the Moderna product, which is the one we're using, that's 28 days. You know, they'll count your second vaccine if you get it a day or two before that, but they prefer you to wait a minimum of 28 days.
A minimum, okay.
A minimum of 28 days. We'd like to do it as close to that 28-day mark as possible. But the vaccine's still valid if it stretches out beyond that. And you've seen some other countries in the world move to, let's get all the first doses out, and we'll worry about second dose in 90 days or whatever. Those are policy decisions that have to be made at the national and state level. Right now, I'm focused on what the current guidelines are, which say, we want to deliver second doses to our community at, or as close to, whether it's the 21 days for Pfizer or 28 days for Moderna as possible.
So you believe we'll have the inventory to be able to do the second dose?
I think that's been the federal planning, to purchase enough vaccines to get those second doses out.
Okay. And then, lastly, what more can the county do to help you? And again, we're not in charge, but we can play a supportive role. I know, last week, there was a, Jonathan reached out to me and, you know, what can we do to get a vaccine distribution site set up in Sarasota County outside of the health department building? I was able to talk to the governor's chief of staff. We had a good conversation. They've been very receptive. And anytime I reach out to them, they've answered the call. But, you know, what more can we do in terms of, are there any additional resources? Is there any additional lobbying efforts we can do? Would a letter from us basically asking for more vaccine in a distribution center make sense, from the county commission, to have the commissioner or the chairman sign on and send it up to the state? Or what can we do to assist you?
Well, I certainly believe every county in the state is asking the same question because everybody is short of vaccine. And I don't want to, I don't want to say, let's just sit back and wait and then not get what we think is what we need. I can tell you that Jonathan asked me that question, maybe not daily, but almost daily, and sometimes pushes me to say, come on, there's got to be things we can help you with. And I appreciate that. As I hear things, I certainly share freely with Jonathan and our EM staff. And for things that I can't do because I'm a state official, I can certainly educate them on the situation, and they can contact you, and you can help us in those ways. But please be assured that that information flows pretty readily, and we're collectively trying to do everything we can.
Thank you all very much. Chuck, just to wrap up this segment, first of all, we all, all of us, can't thank you enough for an extreme comprehensive, and you never withered once under all the questions. So thank you very, very much. I just have a couple of points. Number one, for anybody out there that still thinks this is some sort of a hoax, or you're just going to get a little bit of the flu, please stop. Secondly, if you're out and about, and I'm just repeating what I said about four months ago, wear the mask. We don't wear it up here because we're constantly talking. Wear the mask. I heard something a week or two ago, you do not want your loved ones mad at you because you didn't wear a mask when you were out and about, and you were one of the last people to die because, before you got the vaccine. For heaven's sakes, wear the damn mask. The chairman is, our protocol is that the chair answers all the emails that come to all five commissioners. The commissioners are certainly free, and I encourage them to answer the emails additionally. We have gotten such an overwhelming number of emails that we've actually set up a system with my assistant, where they're getting taken out of my email. And the most recent letter, email from both you and Jonathan, a combination of them, is sent to people. And then, at some point, your assistant will get this whole volume of them additionally. But know that Kathleen is sending that out. Two last points, for anybody that needs information, a starting point is to watch the last 90 minutes. I mean, there's hundreds of questions that were answered, and I thank all the commissioners that asked all those questions. That's the place to get the most recent information, and to set aside some of the feelings, incorrect feelings about what's going on. We hear you, we know this. And I understand how stressful this is. And with stress comes sometimes intensity, and insensitivity, and loss of manners. But we hear you, we understand it, we're doing everything possible. And just on a personal note, for the four or five people that have now confronted my wife and I in public, the limited excursions to Publix or CVS, my wife and I both check off several boxes in 1A, and no, we have not jumped the line. No line to jump. We are 1A. We have not gone ahead of you all through some surreptitious little back door and gotten vaccinated. I am just astounded that people that are friends actually got in our face about this. I think it's indicative of how stressful this is to everyone. So all I can ask on behalf of the commission is, we're in this with you, listen to the last, it's now 90 minutes. We started at 10:05, 9:05. So just call up this, and from 9:05 on, and let's all get through this together. With that, I've had a request for a break. So we're going to take a quick break. And Chuck, if we, the commission, had the power to quadruple your salary, we would do it during the break.
Thank you for that. You know, I'm old retired Navy, and now 20 years with the state. So this is actually my passion, and it's a privilege to be here and serve.
Wow, that's great. Thank you. We're going to take a quick break.